It is now 6:30 and we welcome you all to our tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. I would ask that you please stand for the invocation to be given by Chaplain Charles Jackson with our Sheriff's Department and then join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I ask you to pray in your tradition as I pray in mine. Let us pray. Creator of the universe, thank you for another Board of Commissioners meeting. Send your blessings, Lord, upon the citizens of Henry County, the Board of Commissioners, city officials, public servants, and their families. Lord, we ask you grant the Board of Commissioners wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our time. Help them, Lord, to take care of your people coming from diverse backgrounds and faith Help them, Lord, to aim at what is best for Henry County. Help them, Lord, to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreements. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. We do have an announcement that the planning and zoning item for a public hearing in RZ-18 on Racetrack Petroleum that was requesting a rezoning from RA to C3 for property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Willow Lane in District 3 has been withdrawn by the applicant. I now also ask for a motion to amend the county attorney item 7A regarding the creation of urban redevelopment agency to a discussion only and also Section 7B, which is a resolution to authorize execution of a term sheet for a contingent development agreement regarding the property located on Jodaco Road to be a discussion-only item. So at this time, I call for a motion to be accepted as amended.
To move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails, and we will move forward to the consent agenda, and the agenda will be noted as amended regarding the planning and zoning item. We're now moving to our consent agenda, and the following items...
You need to approve the agenda.
Okay, so at this time, we'll ask for a motion to accept the agenda as amended only to postpone or withdraw the planning and zoning items that was noted.
I move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, all opposed. We'll now move to the consent agenda regarding the following items. The first one is a resolution from the Henry County Fire Department to accept the donation in the amount of $500 from Tanger Outlet Center and its merchants for funding of the firefighters' awards and banquets. We also have the second resolution on the consent agenda from Senior Services, which is a resolution approving the MOU in partnership with Georgia State University for ASIST study. At this time, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor and opposed. Unanimously approved. This ends the consent agenda. We'll now move into the planning and zoning items. The first one is a public hearing regarding RZ-1809, which is located regarding North Ola Henry at 163 LLC requesting a zoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 at Sewer in District 3. We are right now recognize Ms. Julie Yoder to make that presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wood and Board members.
Good evening.
The applicant tonight is requesting to rezone this property from RA Residential Agricultural and R1 Single Family Residence to R2 Single Family Residence on Sewer so that they may develop a residential subdivision. Because the property is within 2,000 feet of Sewer, the developer is required by the Henry County Water Authority to connect to Sewer. I'm sorry. The applicant is proposing 134 lots within the subdivision, which will have a net density of two dwelling units per acre. The request is supported by the future land use map designation of low-density residential, which calls for one to two dwelling units per net acre. On November 8th, 2018, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval with conditions, and the zoning advisory board recommended denial of the requested rezoning. With that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, are there any questions before we begin the public hearing from the board?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. At this time, this is a public hearing, and any persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will be given a total collective time of 10 minutes to present, and those in opposition likewise will be given 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, we ask that you please come forward now and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you so much for your time. Staff, thank you for your time. My name is John Palmer. I'm from Locust Grove, Georgia. I'm with the engineering company that's representing the landowner tonight. I would like to go through real quick one of our plans and talk to you briefly about the development. The development is plus or minus 115 acres. I did want to point out that the developer also, the landowner, also owns this piece of property here that is adjacent to it, and he has agreed to set aside that as permanent conservation, as a park area never to be touched, just about 50 acres. So as part of this development, a portion would be developed, and about 50 acres of it will be left in permanent conservation with a conservation easement that would be placed over it so that it will never be developed for that use, for any other use. I wanted to talk real quick, the lot sizes are a half acre, which is about the same, it's the same size as the lots that are in Lake Dow subdivision on the golf course. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what a half acre lot actually is. We want this to be, and the developer wants this to be, a very good development for Henry County, and because of that, he's willing to take the minimum house size up from 1,700 square feet up to 2,400 square feet, which is 700 square feet more than the required minimum house size for this district. Also going to do side entry garages, street trees, put in buffers around this development so that anyone, the existing houses along North Ola Road will have a 50-foot buffer behind them adjacent to this development. I'll reserve the rest of my time to answer any questions later. If you guys would like to ask me any questions, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so we allow any others to speak in favor to come forward now, please. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Seeing none and hearing none, we're now asking anyone wishing to speak in opposition to please come. Remember, there would be a total of 10 minutes for a total group of anyone that wants to speak in opposition, so if you will line up to identify yourselves and to begin the hearing for those in opposition, so feel free to join the mic and please identify your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for your time, staff. We appreciate everything that the Board members and the staff do for the Henry County. We know it's a lot of work, so I'll try to be brief and to the point. I guess that's about as good as we'll get. My name is Dennis Grossclose. I live at 47 La Farm Road, and I'm a member of the Ola community that's in close proximity to the proposed development. Our concerns focus mostly on the effect that the subdivision is going to have on our property values. It's obvious that the appraised values by the tax assessor's office never match the market selling price, and so a home could be appraised at 247, but when a real estate appraiser or a real estate agent comes through, they're going to look at what other homes in the community have sold for, and that will determine your approximate selling price. So if the homes in the new development were significantly lower, we would see that affecting our property, and I think most of everybody in this room that has a mortgage would definitely appreciate and understand that you do not want the home that you've paid for to suddenly lose 25 or 30% of its value. When we first found out about that, a lot of homeowners were asking, you know, well, how did this happen and what can we do about it? So they also wanted to know, how did the new subdivision get rezoned to R2? That area was currently zoned RA, and they wanted to know, well, why did it have to be R2? Why couldn't that subdivision have been zoned compatible with the homes around it, You know, and also, is this a question of economics and value return on the property? I know the developers paid a lot of money for the property, and there will be development costs, and then there will be building cost. But when I ran the numbers, if you sell 134 homes at 240,000 apiece, you know, that's going to equal $24,120,000. Well, you could sell 100 homes selling at 300,000, and you would generate $30 million minus your costs. So, you know, it's an example where you could build fewer homes with more square footage and actually end up making gross more money. We stated our case to the zoning board on November 8th meeting, and the board amended the proposal to the current conditions of 24 feet. We, actually, a bunch of people in the room applauded, and the chairman gavelled us down and told us that he would clear us out if we didn't settle down, so, I mean, we're from Ola, sorry about that. The homeowners that are going to be most affected by the new subdivision are those eight homes that have built along Ola Road. Most of those are selling for 300,000 to 400,000 dollars, and those people are concerned, you know, about our core concern, property value. They want to make sure that the developers' homes will sell for approximately 300,000 and up. At 2,400 square feet with an approximate square footage selling price of, say, $100 to $125, then we're looking at 240,000 to 260,000 dollars. If they have a way to enhance the home's value, that would be great. We'd love that. We recently had a water authority technician come out, and he checked the water quality of Honey Creek. And if you are aware, most of the times when a development is built, the soil erosion control fabric is not installed with a lot of great care, and there's usually sediment runoff. We would hope that that doesn't happen. We also are concerned, Honey Creek is part of my property, and we don't want to see the retention ponds losing an exorbitant amount of water, because I don't want to see my property being eroded into the creek. I think that's about it. I told you I would be short. I am. We thank all of you for your help, for your efforts on behalf of the community, and we hope that you will consider the interests of the voters and the Ola community when you finalize this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening, Chair Wood. My name is Kim Evans. My address, 335 Ferrell Creek Court in Jackson. We are Ola Community. I am also the administrator of the Ola Talks Facebook page, so this has been quite a big discussion for our Facebook page and our community right now. I don't live near there, but it would affect me in, you know, outreach in ways, but I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Hamp family, Destiny Hamp. They live at 810 North Ola Road, which is the property that butts right up against this development. She has questions about how the privacy is going to affect her property, how is this development going to take precautions to not intrude in her privacy, and the reason why she moved to Ola to begin with. She's also concerned about the schools, because it has been said, and I know this is a BOE question, that Ola schools are not going to be split up to go into the new McDonough schools, but with this new development and all these new homes, how is that going to affect Ola schools? Is eventually any of our Ola children, you know, all of them, going to be affected by these new big developments? Are they eventually going to be moved to different school districts? So I know that's a BOE question, but these are her concerns. She asked me to pass them on to you. Thank you. We appreciate it. We don't want any more new development in our private country area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Calling again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Bill Tony McDonald, Georgia. You know, with all the millions and millions and millions of square feet of new warehouses coming in, all the new tractor trailers traffic coming in, I don't think the infrastructure can take that many more houses without us doing something to kind of curb this thing, because, I mean, I'm seeing more and more and more tractor trailers going down 42 than I've ever seen before, and we got all these millions and millions of square feet of warehouse, that they're going to turn all their tractor trailers loose on us. You won't even be able hardly move around there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Carl Swenson, Stockbridge. Just one point that the engineer brought up, and that was that they're going to have siding on the garages for high-end homes or medium to high-income homes. Typically, they'll have brick around them, and I wonder if you'll address that issue, because that's a kind of a step down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none and hearing none, that concludes our public hearing. We now ask Ms. Yoder to return along with the applicant to address any questions or comments from the board. So at this time, are there any questions or comments from the board? And of course, we love for you all to address the questions that did come from our public as well. Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I too late to make a second?
No, we had one minute and 18 seconds to go, so I'm sorry I didn't see you.
I'll be extraordinarily brief. My name's Jake Zaworski. I live at 585 Snappy Shoals Road. My biggest concern about this is the impact on the schools in our community, particularly the middle school, which is already very, very overcrowded to the point that it's in mobile units. I know that that doesn't necessarily weigh on the decision you have to make, but it weighs heavily on the community. I moved to the Ola area because I wanted my kids to go to a great school, and it currently is that, but I fear that the encroachment of all these subdivisions is just going to really, really have a heavy weight on our schools, our classroom sizes, and our kids are going to pay the ultimate price. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I didn't see you. Okay, we have 39 more...
Do you have a second?
No, sir, please come to the podium and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Darren Moore, 105 Timber Ridge. I would just like everybody that's here for this one item, please stand up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. This then concludes our public hearing, so thank you. All right, so at this moment, we'll allow the board to make any questions or comments. At the same time, we're asking Ms. Yoder and the applicant to address some of the questions that were just posed by the public. So we'll let you begin. There were a couple of questions, and then we'll open it up to the board.
I think the main thing I heard was a question about why can't it stay RA? Why does it have to be R2? R2 is the zoning district with the largest lot sizes that also allows for Sewer, and because they have to connect to Sewer, R2 is essentially the lowest tier they can be.
Okay.
And I did want to point out, we did take into account the houses along North Ola Road, which is why on our plan, you can see the 50-foot buffer, which will be either undisturbed or we're going to naturally enhance it with screenings, trees, shrubs, to do our best to, yeah. Yeah, so you can see, let me go back to this one as well. So you can see here, we've left a 50-foot strip there to provide privacy for the homes that are already on North Ola Road, and of course, someone else mentioned erosion control and detention ponds, and we're going to meet all requirements of the state and the county on all erosion control sedimentation, on detention, road design, everything will meet all requirements of the county. Thank you.
There was a question about the siding.
Oh, good. Thank you for reminding me. It's side entry garages. We want this to be an upper-scale community, and many upper-scale communities, you don't have a garage facing directly to the street, so we wanted to pull the garage back to the side of the house, because we do want them to be more of an upscale style home. Thank you.
Yeah, and another question came up about the siding. So they're hardy plank, they're combination stone, stucco, Craftsman-style home, they're going, vast ones are going to resemble the ones on North Ola Road.
Correct.
And I have met with John Palmer, and we have went over some additional conditions that he has agreed to, and the buffer was one issue that we had, and I had the pleasure of going to Mr. Grossclose's house last Thursday, and I met with about 25 homeowners out there, and we had a good meeting. We met for about two hours, and I thought it was a productive meeting, and so we'll move forward.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the North Ola 163 LLC of Stockbridge, Georgia, request a rezoning from RA Agricultural to R2 with Sewer for the property located on North Ola Road in Land Lot 111 and 112 of 8 District. And I also want to add staff's conditions, and I'm going to go ahead and read all the conditions, so we'll have them. The first five is staff's conditions, and then from six to 12 will be the additional conditions that I have imposed on the property. Number one, a traffic impact steady will be required on all indicative improvements will be required for the development owner. Number two, all entrances shall meet minimum intersection site distance requirement and minimum curb cut spacing requirements. All entrances shall have a decoration lane acceleration table which shall be constructed to Henry County, Georgia Department. Number three, all lots shall be internal to the subdivision, having no access easement along North Ola Road. Number four, all homes shall consist of all side brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of the two or more of the following materials on all sides, brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiber board. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in the soffits and eaves of the house. Number five, all houses shall be built on-site, no modular or manufacturing homes. Number six, each home shall have a two-car garage standard with a side entry garage. Number seven, all homes shall be a minimum of 2,400 square feet of heated space. Number eight, a minimum of four-foot sidewalk shall be required along both sides of the internal street with streetlights throughout. Number nine, all disturbed areas in the front side and rear yards shall be fully sodded to the tree line allowing for the landscaped area. Number 10, a minimum of 50 acres shall be deeded to Henry County or otherwise protected as perpetual conservation green space with a conservation easement prior to the approval of the final plat noting the plat book and page where the easement has been recorded. Any improvement shall be approved by the Building and Plan Review Department prior to installation. Number 11, a landscaped easement shall be planted behind the utility easements to maintain within the landscaped easement along each lot contributing to required number of trees by the landscaper. So there'll be two trees on each lot, and on the corner lot, there'll be three. Number 12, there shall be a 50-foot undisturbed or enhanced buffer around the property boundaries with the exception of any existing recorded easement as shown on the site plan dated 6/31/18 by Falcon Design. That's all the conditions, and I'll have another comment once we get through the vote.
Okay, we have a motion with those conditions that were just read. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Commissioner, you have some other comments?
The other comment, John, is, and I think y'all are working with the Bledsoe family to maybe name that little park area after Larch Turner. He was the original owner of that property from day one, and he was part of the Bledsoe family, so I hope y'all are... So I hope y'all will do that, but it won't be a condition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into our second public hearing in planning and zoning, and this is for RZ 1810, and it's from the Reservoir Group requesting a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Sewer, single-family residence for a property located at 719 Crumley Road in District Four. And we'll recognize Ms. Nieves. Can I pronounce your name correctly? I'm sorry.
Yuriza.
I'm sorry?
Yuriza Nieves.
Yuriza. If you'll just wait a moment, I see individuals are walking out, so we'll allow them to leave, and then we'll request your presentation. Thank you. You may begin now.
Good evening, Chair Wood and Board members. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property located at 719 Crumley Road at the northeast corner of Crumley Road and Selfridge Road from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residence for the development of a one-hundred-lot, single-family residential The subject property has a future land use designation of low-density residential, which allows for a net density of up to two net dwelling units per acre, which supports the applicant's request. Their development has a proposed net density of 1.76 net dwelling units per acre. While the area surrounding the subject property is zoned RA with a minimum of one-acre lots, which is typical for properties on septic, this property benefits from access to sewer. Additionally, the applicant is proposing for the development to include at least twenty acres of open space, as well as a twenty-five-foot buffer which will surround the entirety of the development. On November eighth, 2018, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval with seven conditions. The zoning advisory board recommended approval with staff conditions and an additional condition regarding sodding. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any comments before the public hearing begins? So at this time, this is a public hearing, and at this time, we will also grant those who wish to be heard in favor, including the applicant, a collective time of ten minutes to present. And likewise, those who wish to oppose this would also be given a total collective time of ten minutes. So at this time, we are welcoming anyone wishing to speak in favor to please come forward. If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing the Reservoir Group in this application for rezoning. Got an additional site plan I'll just provide for exhibit. So yes, the subject property is eighty-six and a half acres at the northeast corner of Selfridge Road and Crumley Road, and we are requesting a R2 with sewer option for zoning. We're proposing, as you can see, two entrances, one on Selfridge and one on Crumley Road. And we've worked pretty hard to get the layout to work with the existing topography. There is some topography on the site, as well as some nice floodplain and creek areas that have been protected in open space. In addition to those open space areas, we've provided a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer around the perimeter of the property, with the exception of the entrance locations. All in all, as staff said, is twenty acres of open space. We do have access to public sewer, which is located at the southwest corner of the property, and the lots in this development are twenty-two thousand square foot minimum, roughly a half of an acre, one hundred and fifteen feet wide by roughly one hundred and ninety foot deep. We meet the future land use plan, understand, and as staff mentioned, we had approval from them for our application based on its consistency and based on the plan, did receive unanimous approval from the zoning advisory board, and respectfully request your approval as well. And we've read through the, all of the conditions and are in agreement with those, and happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Okay, well, this is the public hearing, so at this time, we'll welcome anyone else who wishes to speak in favor to please come forward now, and we'll invite you back after the public hearing. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, we will now grant ten minutes for those who wish to speak in opposition. If you would please come forward now. And if there are several others, please line up behind the gentleman that's coming so that we'll know how many people will be willing to speak.
Hello, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jeff Dawes. I live at 761 Crumley Road in McDonough, and I actually have some concerns about this project. You see that little, that house right there off to the corner, and that's my home, and that driveway that's going up. So I, my property line runs right there up in that L shape of the, that you see on the screen. And so my concern is, I'm not so much against the neighborhood and the subdivision as I am what's gonna happen on the property line. Like, I would like to see a buffer, like with trees and a fence up that area to keep that from, my, that, actually, the property, where the, my driveway and the property line of this property is probably only maybe twenty feet. I mean, it's really close. And so my concern is like, you know, what's gonna happen in my backyard? I just bought three and a half acres there. I bought that house about two years ago, you know, with the understanding that there probably would be a subdivision there, but thinking that it probably would be on an acre lot, not half-acre lots. So, so I'm really, I'm not really against the neighborhood, it's just that my driveway right there, when you come, when you come down Crumley Road toward 155, there's a hill right up, right, right as you topped, topped, right before you get to my house, there's a hill, and my concern is, is as you enter to the neighborhood, the D cell lane actually has to begin at my driveway in order to get there. And so for my family's safety, I'm concerned about that D cell lane being so close to my driveway. So that's my concern. And the other concern that I have, you know, again, I'm not against the project, but it's some concerns that I have is the property, I mean, is the traffic on Crumley Road. I think that there really has to be some talk about what's gonna be done with that, because like, I don't know if you guys have been down there or not, but when you try to get out at eight o'clock on Crumley Road to 155, it backs up for a quarter of a mile at least. And so those are my concerns about this issue. Again, that's my house right there, and if this project goes forward, I would just like, I would just like the assurance that, to make sure that my property would be protected with a good buffer, that it would not be, you know, there would not be houses in my backyard, or, as you can see, that's right on my driveway, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten homes that will be right around my property. So that's, that's my concerns, and thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not up here to criticize the builders, developers.
If you state your name and address, please.
Larry Mori, Henry County, Georgia.
Thank you.
I'm kinda proud of both of these developers tonight. They've done a pretty good job. The problem I got is, a few years ago, when you went past the school systems in Henry County, there was trailers all the way around them, and it's getting that way again. If you go on the governor's website and look at the schools in Henry County, I wanna show us a stark reality. A few months ago, the chamber and their representative for education talked about how good things are good. But if you go on the state's website, Henry County School Systems is in a mortal mess. They are, they are almost all of them in sad shape. And it's only gonna get worse the way we're building houses, 'cause they're gonna be right back in those trailers. And you know, I'm seventy-one years old, but if these children don't get an education, your children and your grandchildren are gonna suffer the consequences, 'cause it's only gonna get worse. It ain't gonna get better. And the way the county's growing, as Mr. Bill said about warehouses, you take the warehouses that we've allowed to be built in this county, and you take the failing school systems that we propagate with more developments without addressing education, it will only gonna get a lot worse. One day, you'll pay for it. You know, you can put your head in the sand like an ostrich, or you can address it, but you are gonna pay for it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I see a gentleman coming, two gentlemen.
You know, I'm sitting here listening.
If you'll state your name and address again for the records. Thank you.
Okay. You know, y'all are opening up the floodgates for all these houses. And, and again, you throw all these warehouses with these meas of square feet. This right here is just gonna have this county so you can't even move in it. I don't know what y'all are thinking. And I know this is all just hocus pocus out here. Y'all have already made up your mind, and if you, you know, what people out here say ain't gonna change your mind a bit. It's not gonna change. I've never seen it, and I've been coming here for six years. Your minds are made up, so we're wasting our breath, but I'd rethink a lot of this stuff. Thank you.
My name is Tom Iflin, and I live at 705 Branchview Court, right off of Crumley. My concern is the traffic. We have another subdivision that's just getting built now at the corner of 155 on Crumley. That's a huge subdivision. They're just starting the grading on that, and when all those houses, as was previously stated, at eight o'clock in the morning, you can hardly get out on Crumley. We need a signal there is what I'm concerned about. I'm not so concerned about the houses, but we really need a signal. Somebody's gonna get killed there because people are even driving through the bank parking lot to avoid the backup. And, and it's just, it's, it's a nightmare right now, and, and if you can, I would like you to make sure that a signal gets put in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I see a gentleman coming forward.
Jeff Dawes, 761 Crumley Road. I actually would like to get a description of the homes. I don't think we heard that in the opening remarks of like, what square footage? Is it gonna be a brick or stucco, or is it gonna be siding? Could we just get a description of the homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, that concludes our public hearing, and so we'll now invite the applicant to come forward to also address the questions, and we thank you as well for addressing any questions as well.
Yes, ma'am. I guess in response to the comments and questions concerning the access and safety and traffic, there is a condition, I believe, about a traffic study that has to be performed as part of the approval, the final approval process, that would identify any additional improvements that were necessary at either of the two entrances. In addition, they, the Henry County DOT will require that those entrances meet the intersection site distance requirements for that speed limit of that road to ensure that they are safe locations, and all those will be done prior to any kind of development permit approval. Related to the concern from the, from Mr. Dawes on the adjacent property owner to the north, the applicant has met with Mr. Dawes and agreed to install a shadow box-style privacy fence, as well as some landscape screening, along the southern border of his property, which is the northern border of our property, along that line, that would be right here, where all the number, the number of houses that he had mentioned that backs up to his property. We're willing to, to add that condition to the zoning approval, should you choose to approve it, but that is agreed upon by the developer. And related to the home sizes, the, again, the condition, there's a zoning condition in the resolution for the type of architecture. It's the same exact wording that was in the prior zoning approval that just went through on, on Northola. And in addition, the applicant's willing to agree to a twenty-five-hundred square-foot minimum home.
Okay. And are you willing to read into the records of the description of the home? I know you referred to the previous one. Are you prepared to do that?
Yes, ma'am. That condition states that all homes shall be, or shall consist of all sides brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides, brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiberboard. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in the soffits, eaves, and fascia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I would like to.
Commissioner Thomas.
I just wanted to say to the public that this particular project was in place and in operation prior to me taking my seat here, but the applicant did take the time to come and meet with me and talk to me about their plans for the particular area. One of the things that I have proposed for them is to look at how to use green space as much as possible to make this a community and not just a place filled with houses only, and they have agreed to look at that. In addition to that, I asked them to look at walking trails and the possibility of making that happen. And this is after the fact, they've done their planning and pre-approval through other areas, and they've said they'd be willing to look at those things as well. We are looking to make sure that the workmanship of these particular houses will not cause any type of damage to the property values of the communities in that particular area. So we've had a very long conversation about that. We are not going to let anyone come in and try and build anything that's gonna cause a property damage or property value to your particular area. And as far as the buffers, we have looked at the buffers all the way around this particular plat to make sure that they are big enough to give the privacy that's needed for the people who move there for their privacy. So based upon the conversation that we've had, I think you would be in very good shape. And anyone who feel like we've left out something, just like to know what can we do about A, B, or C, please see me. Let's talk to them and see what else we can do. The stipulations that has been put upon this particular work, this project are very good, you know, all brick, stucco, siding. You'll make sure you get high-quality homes in that particular area. You really will.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of this applicant to go forth on this particular project.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? If unanimously is approved. Thank you. We're now moving to our next public hearing regarding RZ 1817 from the Pacific Group requesting a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to RS Residential Suburban for property located at 1007 Flippin Road in District Five. And we invite Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudisil up for the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Commissioners, the request before you tonight is on Flippin Road, right at the underpass at I-75. It's hatched in green on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. The property is zoned RA, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to RS, which is Residential Suburban. Residential Suburban is a mixture of single-family homes. It could be duplexes, it could be multifamily. In this case, the applicant is requesting one-hundred-and-thirty lots of townhomes and two other pods of one-hundred-and-thirty single-family lots each, for a total of three-hundred-and-ninety dwelling units on one-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres, fifty percent of which is to be preserved as open space, for a net density of five-point-nine dwelling units per acre. The future land use map calls for medium-density residential, which allows up to six dwelling units per acre, which supports the applicant's request. The applicant's site plan shows an amenity package near the front of the development. It shows the various pods, it shows the open space. On November the eighth, the zoning advisory board... On November the 8th, the zoning advisory board heard the applicant's request and recommended approval with the staff recommended conditions. After the zoning advisory board, the applicant modified their site plan in two ways. Number one, they proposed to switch out the basketball court for a covered pavilion. And number two, whereas at first the townhomes were proposed at 26-foot-wide lots, they're now proposed at 20-foot-wide lots. Staff has no objection to this proposal, and so we do recommend approval with the eight conditions that are noted in the executive summary of your exhibit books, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments before we begin the public hearing? Okay. Well, we will begin the public hearing for this request, and at this time, we'll ask anyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, to please come forward for a total collective time of 10 minutes, and afterwards, we'll allow those who wish to speak collectively 10 minutes as well.
Good evening again. Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, representing Pacific Group in this request. Before you this evening, as Stacy mentioned, the property is 168.5 acres at the northwest intersection of Flippin Road and Interstate 75. This property has been in the Broder family since the early 1950s. When they bought this property, came from Switzerland to Henry County to operate this as a cattle farm, and has been in the Broder family since then as an operating cattle farm. And the, but we believe that we've, we've prepared a plan that's suitable as this moves on to its next, to the next generation of development for this tract. As we can see, we've laid this out in three different distinct pods or lot sizes. The pod that's up by the interstate is the townhome section that Stacy mentioned earlier. We did request an adjustment in the width, the minimum width of those lots, but we didn't increase the number of units. It just, we just left larger spaces between the end units, between the actual building groups. But we've got those up against the interstate. There's a, as you leave past the yellow section that's at the north end of the site, those lots are 62 feet wide. And then the green lots that are at the other entrance, the southernmost entrance, and across the creek on the west side of the property are 72-foot-wide lots. Each of those pods has 130 units for a total of the 360. The RS zoning district does require the two uses, a multifamily use and a single-family use, so the townhomes is what we are proposing as our multifamily use. The minimum lot size that's required under the RS zoning district is 72, 160 square foot minimum for the single-family section. In addition, the minimum lot size is 60 feet, and we exceed both the minimum lot width and the minimum lot area for all the single-family uses. The property's been buffered by the interstate as well as there are, there is some floodplain and a creek that bisects the property between those two pods, as you can see there. We've been, in addition, we've offered a 50-foot buffer around the perimeter of the property minimum, as well as that open space. The open space that's shown right now is 84 acres total. We've intentionally placed that for two purposes. One is to provide buffering where it was needed, other was to preserve natural resources. And in those areas, we're able to offer some passive recreational uses like trails, as you can see on the site plan. The, in addition, the amenities, we've kind of intentionally located at the main entrance to the project, or actually between the two main entrances of the project, so offers a nice visual as people are entering the property from, from either entrance. The staff recommendation was appro, they did recommend approval, and there was certain conditions associated with that, and we did receive unanimous zoning advisory board approval. There's a, and I've read through the draft resolution, and we've got just a couple of requested changes that I'd like to discuss. One of the items that was actually brought up during the zoning advisory board hearing was a request to take the 50, there was a condition of a 50% open space requirement. We requested at the zoning advisory board hearing, and I don't think it got written into the, any revised condition, to reduce that to 40%, only because it's still a conceptual site plan. Haven't gone through the final engineering design, and we're asking for just a little bit of flexibility so that if there's additional buffers that we decide to add, or there's some reason why we can't get exactly 50 acres, we'd just like permission to have a little bit of leeway down to 40%. There is no open space requirement for any zoning in Henry County, except if you're a conservation subdivision, and that's a 40% requirement. So we're just asking for something that's consistent and compatible with that ordinance. In addition, one of the conditions, item number six in the draft resolution refers to the August 15th site plan, and as Stacy mentioned earlier, there was a predecessor, December the 2nd site plan, that had the change with the townhomes and swapping out the basketball court for the open-air pavilion. And we would just like to see if we can make an amendment to address that most recent site plan that was submitted to staff. And short of that, I don't have anything else, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Okay. This is during a public hearing, so if we will, we'll allow anyone else to now wish, come forward who wishes to speak in favor. So, again, we're in the public hearing, and at this time, we welcome anyone else who wishes to speak in favor to please come forward. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Okay? At this time, we'll now grant a total of 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Lakeisha Gant. I live in Stockbridge, Georgia. I am a city council member for the city of Stockbridge, and I'm also the president of Red Oak Elementary School Council. And on behalf of, I've been speaking to some of the teachers today. There are a lot of concerns, but before I begin, I want to let you know, I've heard a lot of talkings back and forth, being able to do that as an elected official, and want you to know that the people of Stockbridge are educated people. Not only are we educated, we're competent, and we're very aware of what's going on. And when I say that, I want you to understand that I'm aware that density is an issue here in Henry County, because we do want to start creating an area where other commercial buildings and other commercial businesses will come here. But density is not as important as our infrastructure. It is not as important as making sure we have the sidewalks. Flippin Road is becoming extremely busy. I've watched every single planning and zoning presentation that's been done here thus far. If you look at this particular map, this one's surrounded by plenty of neighborhoods. And what you're saying is, you're gonna build 390 units on a farmland that has some flooding areas, in addition to, not only are you gonna do that, you're gonna bring those, that neighborhood into our Dutch Town Community School System, which my children are a part of at Red Oak Elementary School. And in the fifth grade, fourth grade, my daughter has already 27 students there, with the challenge of keeping up our test scores. Now, I know you might say that's a Board of Education problem, but it's not. It's our problem. Madam Chair, you came to our municipal dinner, and you said we, as a county, should work together. Well, we, as a county, needs to get together with the Board of Education, even though they have a plan in place and they can't build any additional schools. We can't afford to overcrowd our schools, and our teachers are trying to work on putting our grades back up, so that we can keep our property values together, and so that we can continue to be the great county that we're in. I think that this is poor planning. I think that the infrastructure should really be taken into consideration. I think that we also need to consider actually thinking about what impact this has if we build first and then try to recoup later. I also think that we need to speak about, think about the warehouses and other things that we're doing here in this community. Warehouses, logistics centers, whatever you want to call them, become mill towns. We're creating our future, and it looks like a disaster. We deserve better. And I think we all should work to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Camilla Moore, 4640, City of Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm the Assistant City Manager of Community Development, so I'm not here for the city to speak in for or against. The city's just here for clarification of a couple of points, and I was told that only you as members of the board could give those answers. Our concern for our residents, if you look on this map, the proposed project is pretty much encircled by the city of Stockbridge, so the concerns of our residents are basically twofold. We don't have any problem with the land use, that's fine. What we are concerned about is because of the location on Flippin Road, there is a density issue and a transportation issue. As you know, on any given day, everybody wants to use Flippin as a cut-through from I-75. So, for the city's perspective, what we would like for the county to help us to do is to talk about the road improvements. I did talk to your staff, and apparently what you have in the budget doesn't come online to 2032 and 2042, and that's way north, northwest of where this property is. So for clarification, we would like to know if there are any splash dollars or future splash dollars that could deal with widening Flippin roads to accommodate 390 units, which is one, or two, if you would consider lowering the density so that during peak hours of traffic, you have a less traffic flow on Flippin roads. Those are the two concerns. Again, the city's not here for or against. We'd just like some answers as it relates to road improvements, two-lane, four-lanes, because as you know, when you do a traffic impact study on this property, it only will cover the frontage of the property. It will not address the traffic issues that are along Flippin Road.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Williams, 190 Bank Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. Criteria point four, I want to deal with building 390 units of wetland that is in the Big Cotton, Little Cotton, Indian Creek Watershed Protection District, located inside the 100-year flood hazard area of the property at 1007 Flippin Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. It just causes me concern of erosion control, runoff control, sewage disposal, and possible groundwater contamination as early as beginning of the construction site. My next point is criterion point five. The area surrounding the subject property is a mixture of underdeveloped land, planned developments, and multifamily residential developments, which says it is going to change the effect of the community. And according to the transportation in CTP, page four, the Henry Joint County Cities Transportation Plan, the goal says that you're, you need to, on 8.1, allocate at least 75% of splash projects to transportation purposes. We have not done that. 9.0, enhance citizens' health and quality through transportation improvements. We have not done that. 9.2, to provide comfortable, safe, and convenient options to walk to nearby destinations, and we have not done that. We're dealing with the issues of transportation. There are only two red lights on Flippin Road, and that's one between Walt Stevens, and the other one is between Bank Road. If we should have a disaster or something needs to come down Flippin Road, I just wanted on record that I am tremendously concerned that the fire department will not be able to get to us, that the ambulance will not be able to get to us, because that's a two-road lane. I want to thank you for your kindness.
Thank you.
Chairman, Board Members, my name's Dan Jansen, Henry County. I'd just like to oppose this project, because it seems like in Henry County, I moved down here 12 years ago because it was a nice, quiet county. And I remember when you all ran for office, you said you were gonna run on smart growth and smart planning, and that we were gonna bring technical jobs down here and high-paying jobs to Henry County. All I see is warehouses being built. I see every single piece of land being packed with every kind of bit of, type of housing that we can put to, high-density, low-density. We have no infrastructure to support any of this. We keep building warehouse after warehouse after warehouse. Ms. Wood, I remember when you were running, I asked you this specifically, I said, are you gonna do something about this? Obviously, nothing has been done. We've just built more, million, million more square foot of warehouse. The roads are so chockered block, our schools are so full, and all I see from the board members up here is you've already made up your mind before you've come into this meeting, and everybody raises their hand and supports every one of these projects. You have a whole group of citizens back here that are concerned about the density in this community, and you just keep approving and approving and approving, and these meetings just seem like, it's like, it's just, you're doing it just strictly to just take up time. So I just want to just put my opposition to these high-density projects we have in Henry County until we get some infrastructure. Look at Gwinnett's planning, see how they build roads before they build developments, and go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Reichert. I live at 1448 Flippin Road, which is buttoned up to this development, and our traffic is ridiculous. Sometimes it takes me five minutes to get out of the driveway, especially when there's an accident on 75. There is no way we can handle another, at least 800 cars, because most homes have two cars apiece that would put an additional 800 cars on that road daily, and there is no way. I have contacted the Department of Transportation for the red light at Flippin and 42, and they said they could not do anything to it because there was no secondary road to it. I've contacted Henry County Department of Transportation about a turn signal on 42. They can't do anything, but our traffic is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Arielle Shaw. I'm in Henry County as well. This proposed development is literally in my backyard. I am not against growth. I am, I understand that we have to have a certain amount of density to attract the certain amount of economic growth that we're wanting, but I am in favor of smart growth. I want to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place.
Our time has expired. I'll look to the board to see if there is a motion to extend the time. Okay? Hearing none, our time is ended for those in opposition.
Thank you.
So thank you. So at this time, the public hearing has concluded, and what we'll do is invite our applicant and Mr. Rudisil back up to address any questions or comments from the board.
Conditions that we added to the subdivision?
Related to the entrance?
The entrance, as well as the walking trails and some of the other amenities that were added.
Yes, sir. We're in agreement with those, with those additional conditions. I wasn't aware of the, the walking trail condition. I read the condition with regards to the entrance monumentation.
So, so basically, I want, I want to say there was a lot of communication going back and forth. There've been a number of people that have been trying to develop this area for, for a number of years. Initially, when I was approached, it was a development that, where there wasn't really any standards to the actual exterior, but we worked together, and, and the developer agreed to make everything in the subdivision all brick. They added walking trails throughout the subdivision, soccer fields, Olympic-sized pool. So this is gonna be one of the, one of the premier subdivisions in Henry County, and this is gonna be one that the county, as well as areas within the city, could be proud of. It would be one of the nicest areas along Flippin Road. So with that said, I am going to, to move forward and ask that we approve this, this resolution and zoning, and add a ninth condition regarding adding 15 to 20-foot-wide brick or stone illuminated signage along all entrances of the subdivision. So I'm gonna move to approve.
Okay, so you are making a motion. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion with those conditions that were just stated. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, please, please keep order, please. Thank you. Thank you. So at this time, we'll now move the item, public hearing, RZ 1816, with Race Track Petroleum requesting a rezoning from RA to C3, has been removed from the agenda, so I just wanted to reemphasize that. We'll now move into our next agenda items, and we'll invite up the county attorney to
We'll now move into our next agenda items, and we'll invite up the county attorney to present the resolution creating the Urban Redevelopment Agency, and we will look forward to that presentation.
As you are aware, there's a resolution before you to establish an Urban Redevelopment Agency of Henry County. Got a quick presentation I want to run through to give you some background about what an urban redevelopment agency is and what you're being asked to do today. So, the state of Georgia has authorized the creation of an Urban Redevelopment Agency for every county and every city in Georgia. It's kind of like a light switch. You've got one available to you if you so choose to activate it. You just have to switch the flip and turn it on, and that's the resolution before you today, is to simply activate the Urban Redevelopment Agency. In order to flip that switch or to activate your agency, you have to adopt what is referred to as a resolution of necessity, and that's actually the resolution we'll talk about when I go through the slide presentation. What that resolution of necessity does is it has some findings that you are required to make. In order to adopt an Urban Redevelopment Agency, you must make certain findings. And what those findings are, is that there exists within the county one or more areas or pockets of blight. I'm going to talk to you about what pockets of blight are in a moment. And you also have to find that the rehabilitation, conservation, or redevelopment of those pockets of blight is necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare of the county. So the first thing that you have to understand is what is a pocket of blight. In the code, the Georgia law defines what those pockets of blight are in essentially three main ways, and I'm going to walk through each one of them with you. The first one consists of all of the things I'm about to go through, that there are dilapidated, deteriorated, old or obsolete buildings, that there is inadequate provision for ventilation, light, air, sanitation, or open space, that there is high density of population or overcrowding, that there are conditions which endanger life or property due to the risk of fire or other risks, and that there are conditions which are conducive to ill-health, transmission of disease, infant mortality, juvenile delinquency, or crime. That first element of pockets of blight are what we often refer to as slum areas. That's sort of the first basic definition. The next pocket area or definition of pockets of blight are, and this one looks a lot similar, it's a little less drastic than the first one, it is areas in which there are a substantial number of deteriorating structures, that there is a defective or inadequate street layout, that there is a faulty lot layout, that there are unsanitary or unsafe conditions, that there is a deterioration of improvements, and those are primarily public improvements like roads, streets, sewers, things like that, that there's a lot of tax delinquency, and that there are conditions which endanger the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and finally, that those conditions impair the growth and the development as a result of the environmental impacts. This second group of conditions kind of deals with infrastructure. The first one deals with what's going on in private lots. This one kind of deals with the public layout of areas of property. The third pocket of blight is a catch-all, and that's a combination of any of those factors we just talked about, that substantially impairs or impedes the sound growth of the county. So essentially, any of those 12 conditions I read through, any combination of those exists that exceed or that impair good development in this county can be determined either by this board or an Urban Redevelopment Agency to be a pocket of blight. So the resolution I'll talk to you about in a moment, the first finding for you to make is whether or not you find that in this county there do exist areas like that. If you do find that there exist areas of that nature, you can move on. So the next thing I want to talk to you about are what are the powers of your Urban Redevelopment Agency? Urban redevelopment agencies exist in order to implement redevelopment plans. That's really why urban redevelopment agencies exist, and I'm going to talk about what a redevelopment plan is in a little more detail and how you go about getting to one. You can also engage in surface transportation projects through your Urban Redevelopment Agency. And finally, sort of the meat of the Urban Development Agency is that you can plan, design, finance, construct, acquire, lease, operate, or maintain projects, and that can include public projects. And the most important issue sort of for us at this stage in our consideration of an Urban Redevelopment Agency is your ability to issue revenue bonds to finance those projects. And I know you've all met with the representatives from Davenport Financial who are here today, and discuss the availability of revenue bonds for certain public improvements if you have an Urban Redevelopment Agency. And that's what we're doing here today, is to try to get you that agency in place if you so choose, so it's available to help you finance public projects. In order to do anything, an Urban Redevelopment Authority must operate off of a redevelopment plan, and that's exactly what it says. It's a plan for an area to redevelop it and to bring it out of that pocket of blight and back into productive use. It can be prepared either by the local government or by any other entity. So a property owner could own property that they believe is blighted. They could prepare a redevelopment plan, present it to this board or to the Urban Redevelopment Agency for approval. It's not in effect until it's approved, and it can't be approved unless and until you have determined that the area covered by that plan is in fact a blighted area, which would require those findings we talked about before, and we have to come into a room like this, and either in front of you or another agency, you have to have a public hearing to discuss both the blighted area and the redevelopment plan. If you engage in that entire process, you can then commence with a redevelopment project as defined in that plan. The last thing I want to go over, big picture, is how an Urban Redevelopment Agency is governed. The law in the state of Georgia grants the Board of Commissioners, or if it's a city, the city council, the authority to appoint the governing members of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. It can be you. You could appoint outside people. A city can appoint their downtown development authority to do it, but you don't have that The people appointed to run the Urban Redevelopment Agency don't get paid to do it. It's one of the very few entities that's created that serve government that by law they are prohibited from getting paid. You cannot pay them to do it. You can reimburse actual expenses, and you can pay to train them. In fact, the state would require you send them to some level of training. And ultimately, or lastly, it's another one of the only authorities I'm aware of that the state law does this. This board, even if you appoint outside people to run the Urban Redevelopment Agency, this board appoints the chair and the vice chair of that agency. So that's really the big picture of what an Urban Redevelopment Agency. I'd invite your questions. I do know that there's been one question Commissioner Thomas asked me that I didn't address in this presentation, because she asked me this afternoon, and that is, what's the difference between an Urban Redevelopment Agency and a Development Authority? You have a, Henry County Development Authority exists already. And the purpose, it's really three main differences. First of all is the purpose. The purpose of your Development Authority is for economic development. The purpose of an Urban Redevelopment Agency is for redevelopment. Those are two fundamentally different things. They might achieve the same goal, but they go about them differently. One of the specific project or specific differences between the two that I think will be important as we walk down the path of dealing with some of the issues that we have to deal with, and it's in fact where these things came up in the discussions, is that a Development Authority can't really do public projects. The Development Authority exists to foster private economic development. The Urban Redevelopment Agency is specifically authorized to do public projects. Things like courthouses, county administration buildings, you know, other public spaces are within the sort of the arms of an Urban Redevelopment Agency. They're not within the arms of your Development Authority. And the last thing is one of the things we went through earlier, which is the approved development plan, redevelopment plan. A Development Authority can go out and do whatever project it sees fit that meets its mission. An Urban Redevelopment Agency is limited to those projects that fall within a redevelopment plan that is presented and approved after a public hearing. So there's a little more public scrutiny or public, it's a little more out in the open than what a Development Authority does, because you are required to conduct a public hearing before you can adopt a redevelopment plan. You're required to adopt a redevelopment plan before the Urban Redevelopment Agency can do anything. It can't borrow any money or engage in any kind of development activity until there's a redevelopment plan, and again, it has to be a public hearing. So those are the three differences, the three things that would be new that you're adding to your, the county as a bigger entity is sort of adding to its arsenal. In a big picture, in a real, meaningful way, what this Urban Redevelopment Agency is about is to provide you a meaningful tool that you might use to put on your tool belt when you go to figure out how to finance public projects, because that's really how we anticipate you using an Urban Redevelopment Agency. You might not ever use one. You might use one. We don't know. I don't think we're that far in the planning of any of your future capital projects or any of your future redevelopment projects to know exactly what methodology you will use to finance any of them, but the resolution that I'm going to discuss with you in just a second will provide you that tool. You won't have to go back and create one. You will already have it. In fact, my understanding is, when the county manager and her staff met with Davenport, one of the first questions they asked was, do we have an Urban Redevelopment Agency? Well, if you approve the resolution tonight, you can say that you do, and they can focus on helping you achieve your public project goals through that Urban Redevelopment Agency. So are there any other questions? I'd be happy to try to answer anything you have.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Can you speak to tax allocation districts and how they will work with the Urban Redevelopment Board?
Yes, so a tax allocation district is a little bit of a different creature. So without going into a whole lot of complicated analysis, what a tax allocation district is, would be an area of the county that you draw off a map. You find a specific area of the county, you close off the boundaries, and within that area of the county, taxes generated from improvements can be kept and spent only in that area of the county. So I believe, I may be wrong about this, but I believe Atlantic Station up in Atlanta is part of a tax allocation district. So a portion of their property tax bill doesn't go into the City of Atlanta and get distributed all over the city. It stays right in that district for improvements, things like road improvements and infrastructure repairs. And frequently, you take an Urban Redevelopment Agency, you finance it, initially finance your redevelopment, you then put on top of that a tax allocation district, and you tax it some additional money for some additional services, whether it's extra road improvements, streetlights, you can have extra police protection, you can do all kinds of extra services, and only that area that benefits from those extra services pays those property taxes. There's another creature called a community improvement district that does very much the same. You take a baseline of sort of unimproved values, and as that area improves and the tax base grows, that new tax growth stays within that area as well, and those are often sort of stacked on top of Urban Redevelopment Agencies. Those, the tax allocation districts, community improvement districts, they're really more maintenance goals, maintenance tools. The Urban Redevelopment Agency is really more of a startup tool. So they often, you often work those together.
Are there other questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question in reference to the blighted areas. I know that the cost of patchwork to our existing buildings are just astronomical right now. Our needs have really outpaced the county and our growth, even our infrastructure. We're talking about infrastructure and roads. How do you determine if that area is blighted or not? And if we're looking at the existing facilities that we have that we need to improve, you know, what determines that it's, I mean, I saw dilapidated, unsafe, and when I think about that, I think about our judicial center. I think about those things around that area. So would we be able to utilize those funds to kind of get us where we need to be? We're talking about Flipping Road. We're talking about widening the road, and I know that a lot of that road belongs to Stockbridge, but how do we use these type of funds to help move this process forward?
So the way you determine whether or not an area is a pocket of blight is it's a judgment call. There's no right or wrong test. It's not necessarily a check-the-box or a scoring system. You have to make a judgment call about whether or not those conditions exist on any particular property or in any particular area. Now, I'll tell you this, that one of our limitations will be, you know, our jurisdictional authority. Our Urban Redevelopment Agency will be a county redevelopment agency. So we're going to have to do some work to determine exactly when and how or whether our Urban Redevelopment Agency can exercise those powers inside someone else's jurisdiction. There are some provisions that allow that to be done. I can't, I don't want to really speak to any specific project because we're too far, we're way too, way far ahead of that, but as a general rule, it's going to be left to the discretion of the decision-maker to make a good-faith determination that an area is blighted. It doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be every structure falling down, falling apart. It doesn't have to be, you know, the worst of the worst when we think of the word slums, but at the same time, you shouldn't find an area that, you know, it's fine, it's great, it could be better. That's probably not enough. It's somewhere, you know, somewhere in between those. But ultimately, it relies on a good-faith determination that the agency making that decision makes. And chances are, if you borrow money, if you engage in any of these financing activities, there's a process that sometimes you go through, you're not required to do it every time, but there may be an instance where we go and validate some of these borrowing issues of these bonds, and if you do that, you actually have to present it to a court and prove to the court that you've checked all the boxes, and that would include with an urban redevelopment project that the property project was in fact blighted.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Thomas, and then I have some.
Yes, if I understand you correctly, Patrick, and from my previous discussion, this vehicle can allow us to move some projects at a much faster pace. At this point in time, the other factors that keep us from moving certain projects till the 2022 or 2023 or 2030, but this particular agency, once it's activated, we can use it to help us secure funding to move some of those projects to a closer date and put them into operation, correct?
Well, I certainly hope so. I can't speak, again, I don't know enough about any particular project that's, that the board wants to move forward with, but I can tell you this, that the slide I put that said you can issue revenue bonds, revenue bonds are much easier, they're not easy, they're not something that your average person really grasps, but they are much easier, much less time-consuming than a lot of your other borrowing opportunities. And if you have this agency in place today, and I don't mean to be critical of this board or any other board, but how things typically work is, once you find a need, you want it addressed right now. And when y'all determine that this area, whatever this area is, it needs to be addressed right now, and management, go out and find me a way to finance it. Well, you don't want us to come to you and say, okay, well, the only way we can fund it is to create this agency now. We want to have you guys consider creating the agency now. We're going to put it on a shelf, and when you find the project, we're going to check that shelf, and we're going to say, is the Urban Redevelopment Agency the right vehicle for this? Traditionally, the Board of Commissioners doesn't really care what vehicle we use to get there, as long as we get there. So we want to have this in place if it meets your approval, so that you can act on it when necessary, but it would be, it's always good to have options. I want to have as many options as we can to help satisfy the goals of this board.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Holmes?
With respect to the area that's identified as the redeveloped area, can you expand it to properties that are contiguous with that particular area?
Yes, you can, you define the area in a way that makes sense, and it doesn't necessarily have to end on the last rundown building. It may be that it makes sense to include a larger area as part of your area, and I think you would probably define the boundaries of your area in a way that would make sense for any planning purpose. I think when you go to determine an area to consider, you're probably going to have part of that process include your economic development team. Dante and his staff are probably going to look at zoning maps, transportation maps, and things like that, and make sure you don't, you don't want to just pick up half an area. If an area is considered an area, it's a good idea to keep it together and operate it all at the same time, so.
All right. Well, just a couple of thoughts. One, I kind of really wish that we would have had more time for discussion about all this before the vote is actually called, but here we are. But one, I see this as a great tool for Henry County. I know that it is good for other cities and other counties. This is a great tool. What I'm concerned about is that we need to have more of a strategy and a plan. You mentioned the redevelopment plans. We don't know what that is. I have not I have not had enough time to even go and do homework on even just to understand where the blighted areas are so that I can put my arms around where we think we're going, because we've got to begin, again, thinking about all options. There's been a discussion about this, this agency, there's been discussion about TADs, CIDs, Scott Splosts coming up. We've got to begin to sit down and talk about all of these things as we think about comprehensive development, overlapping transportation and everything else. So again, I wish this could have been a discussion that could have been held during the retreat, which is, is coming up really soon, I hope. So that is my thoughts about it. Matter of fact, I'd like to make a motion to table this vote based on those statements that I just made, because we need to put all of this together. I am in support of this Urban Redevelopment Agency. I understand that it is now, I'm not talking about putting it off for months, because we do have a lot of opportunity that we need to address. But again, we need to be strategic in how we do these things. So I make a motion that we table this until further discussion to at least bring back in, in the next meeting or even the next, at the, or it can't be at the next meeting because our retreat isn't until the end of February, I think. But at, at least until after the board retreat. So I made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it based on the information, lack of information, there's more information I'd like to get as well. So I'll second the motion to table.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, any opposed? Okay, okay, thank you. All right. Well, at this time, we'll now call for a motion to...
Well, if I could, Chair, before you move on, I'd like to sort of run through the resolution, because it's a little bit different than the presentation I made, and just make sure the board has an understanding of what you're being asked to vote on. So the resolution establishing the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Henry County primarily does two things, I guess three things. Number one, it, it authorizes your Urban Redevelopment Agency to undertake your redevelopment powers. That's really what urban redevelopment agencies exist for. So that's number one. Number two is, you make a determination that there are, in Henry County, blighted areas, those areas that meet those pockets of blight. You're not identifying where those areas are right now. All you're saying is, there are blighted areas. And the third thing you will do is determine governance of this agency. And you have a choice. And if you look at your resolution, I've highlighted a section which is paragraph number two, three, and four. I, I don't know if it's the board's will, how to govern this agency. Paragraph two, which is highlighted, says that the Henry County Board of Commissioners will serve as the commissioners of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. So essentially, the ladies and gentlemen of this board will also be commissioners of the Urban Redevelopment Agency. If you do that, you don't have to have another group of people come in and, and get ramped up, you don't have to staff them separately. The alternative is that you appoint someone else to serve in this role. Now, I, with the, the draft that I provided, actually called for five members to be appointed, one from each district, and I did that only because that's how the Development Authority does. We had some brief, very brief conversations with the Development Authority. I'm not sure they're prepared to say, we want to take this task on, because they have a little bit of a different role. There's also some technicalities in the Development Authority's rule today, or their, and their enabling legislation, that would prohibit them from serving in dual roles. So if, if that's the decision, they would have to amend their, their authority rules to allow them to serve in this dual capacity. So the first thing you have to do is make that determination of how to, how to manage it. Either this board does it, or you appoint outside people. And the last thing you would have to do is appoint a chair and vice chair, if you so, if you so choose. I will say this about sort of identifying the pockets of blight, that whether you identify a pocket of blight today or not, it doesn't really matter, because you can't do anything until there's an urban redevelopment plan, which can't be approved until there's a public hearing. So by you simply saying that the Urban Redevelopment Agency is au, is authorized, we think there are areas of blight, we're a long way from identifying where those projects are, what projects, or even if there are any projects. It could be that we take a look at this tool, look at the projects and decide, we don't need it, we'll never use it. And it sits there, it, it doesn't, there's no cost involved in having this thing sit there. So it's out there, it's available to you if you so choose. If not, then we may come back to you if we find that that's the best vehicle.
All right, Commissioner Clemmons?
I have a question for you. Recently, on the news, Henry County was on the news for some issues with dam work in Lake Dow. It's been two years, these people are complaining about the roads, the water, unsafe conditions. Is this the type of thing that this type of urban redevelopment road could do?
You might be able to use an Urban Redevelopment Agency for a project like this. The problem becomes, you would have to pair it with a funding source, because you're not going, unless, there has to be some underlying revenue to satisfy the debt that would be incurred to repair the dam like that. There is a plan to address that situation that doesn't involve an Urban Redevelopment Agency, that would really involve your stormwater fees, which is probably a more appropriate way to address it. I think for that specific use, while something like a failed dam may be the type of, of condition that would result in blight, I just think for that project, there's a better way to do it that doesn't require that extra layer. But that might be the type of project, there may be a project out there like that where it's a, it, it does, pockets of blight does include environmental conditions.
Right.
You know, you've got a, you've got a breached dam, you've got a, you know, a massive area of, of, you know, sloppy wetlands, I don't know how best to describe them, that need to be dealt with. An Urban Redevelopment Agency could do that.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have one last question. So do we have a redevelopment plan?
No, you won't adopt a redevelopment plan until you have a specific site in mind, because that's specific site oriented. It's not a countywide plan. You would have a specific site and a specific plan for that specific site.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
And before, before there's a second, we need to know which manner of governance you want to...
I'll say who should approve the board appointing the board members.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution as stated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
And, and Chair, what I'll do is, we'll schedule to bring this back in a month with some board member appointees, because you'll need to, you'll need to start thinking about board members to appoint.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move now into the next resolution that you're presenting as our county attorney regarding the authorization, execution of a term sheet for a contingent development agreement regarding the property located on Jodico Road on the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Jodico Road and I-75.
Thank you, Chair. So this item involves 158.65 acres located at Interstate 75 and Jodico Road on the southwest quadrant of that interstate exchange. It's shown on Exhibit A that I've put on the screen. So this property is currently located within the city of Stockbridge. And recently, the owner, developer of the property has come to the county and proposed an opportunity for development which would call for the county's involvement. And I want to outline the terms, the potential terms if the board chooses to go in this direction. So the first thing that would happen is the area highlighted in blue, and you can't really read it, if there's an arrow pointing at it that says Arena Conference Center Site, that's roughly six acres. That portion of the property would be donated to the county, obviously to be used for the development of an arena or conference center. The county would then, when funding is available and through whatever avenue is appropriate, would develop that into a regional area, a regional arena and conference center with whatever amenities are appropriate to go with one of those. The owner would donate to the county and to the Georgia Department of Transportation as necessary, whatever right of way is needed to develop the property in accordance with that site plan. And you'll notice there's a, a road, I guess it's going left, right, that's really north-south. That is the proposed north-south parallel connector that GDOT will be funding at some point in the future. I don't know if we have any details about when that will be. But in order for GDOT to do that program, they're going to have to acquire right of way, and this proposal would call for the, for the developer to donate that right of way. And whatever other right of way would be necessary to development, to develop the property. The county would commit to contribute up to $5 million in District Two Splosts Funds, District Two allocated transportation splosts funds, for the construction of whatever roads are necessary. And that would include either the northwest connector, or whatever else is needed to serve the county's interest on getting cars to and through that property. The project would call for the owner to commence development of this site, of the overall site, within six months following the date of any de-annexation. This is awfully early in a project of this type to have definitive terms nailed down, so we've included a provision that says that we would negotiate and enter into whatever other easements or agreements are necessary for things that happen on joint development agreements like this. We're going to have to deal with stormwater, we're going to have to deal with water and sewer, probably joint detention facilities and things like that. We won't know that, you won't know that to those real life development plans. The entire agreement, this entire agreement would be contingent on the following things. In other words, there's no deal unless the following things happen. First of all, because you're going to be utilizing county splosts funds, the property must be de-annexed from the city of Stockbridge and back into the county. Now, that de-annexation doesn't happen in this room. De-annexation of property is 100% between the property owner and the city, well, 90% between the property owner and the city, because Georgia law says a property owner can ask a city to de-annex it. If the city approves it, the county has to vote to accept the property. So if the city of Stockbridge does not agree to de-annex this property, none of this agreement happens. Next, the, the county, if the property is de-annexed into the county, the property owner is going to have to apply for this, to this board and obtain suitable zoning for this project. I think when this project went into the city of Stockbridge, it was zoned, I don't remember how it was zoned, I was looking for Dante. It was zoned PD. PD probably wouldn't work for this project as planned, it would take, it would take some zoning modifications. This entire agreement would also be contingent on the availability of money. The obligation to the county to put any splosts funds in would obviously depend on the availability of those funds. The obligation of the county to build this arena or conference center, again, would depend on the availability of funding to build that conference center. And finally, we would need to confirm the status of the title of the property that we're receiving. We would, just like we do with any other property, we would examine title, get title insurance, and make sure that the title you're getting is good, marketable title without any restrictions on your use. So this agreement is, this proposal is before the board. It would sort of lay a groundwork, it would lay the basis for your staff to continue. We would have direction from this board, where to go as we continue to work through this process, if we continue to work through this process. It would also give the developer an assurance that if he asks the city to de-annex him, he knows what he's going into. You know, one of the risks of, of annexing property or de-annexing property is you're changing jurisdictions. The developer knows what he has in the city of Stockbridge, he's got his zoning. If he de-annexes, you can't zone property before it's de-annexed. If he de-annexes, he needs to know what he's getting into. And so what we're doing is trying to give some level of assurance, this is what you're getting into if you de-annex this property. So that's the agreement that's been presented, that we have presented. It came to us from the developer. This was something that the developer approached the county about. I don't know, and I want to, I'm not going to attempt to answer, because I don't have any idea what communications, if any, the developer has had with the city, what plans they have. But this is the plan that we are prepared to present. And it's, it's something of a skeletal plan, and we recognize that. But at this point in the game, that's the best you're going to be able to get, unless we spend more time, more energy, more money pursuing that plan, because the work your staff does to get you to this point, it's not free. We need, we want to make sure that we're doing something, that your staff is spending its time and energy on something that this board wants to see. So that's before you, tonight, for your consideration.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. Are, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barm?
Yes, Patrick, just a point of clarification. The funds that we're talking about would definitely come out of District Two's money, it wouldn't come out of any other district.
That is my understanding that, and District Two Commissioner, Ms. Clemmons, you may want to confirm that, but my understanding is, the District Two Commissioner has committed to all of the, that funding necessary to come out of her allocation of her transportation funds for splosts, so it would all come from District Two.
And that splosts, clarify which splosts?
It would be the new splosts, it would be Splosts Five.
And then also, it, it all kind of lays in the hand of City of Stockbridge, because they can object to this whole thing, and it all goes away.
That's right. So if the property owner doesn't apply to de-annex, this goes away. If the property owner applies to de-annex and the city says no, this goes away.
Okay, that's all I have.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
My question, Patrick, is, we hadn't, we hadn't met with the city of Stockbridge. We don't know what the city of Stockbridge's plans are for the property. I would like to see this board reach out to the city of Stockbridge and see what they have to say about this. It may be where we can put the city of Stockbridge and the county together and make this project happen, maybe divide some costs. But we hadn't had any conversation, I hadn't had any conversation with anybody at the city council of the Stockbridge. So I'd like to see us have a, sit down and have a conversation with, with the city and the developer. Because this could...
Commissioner Clemmons?
Let's talk, I want to really talk about how we got to this point. First of all, in 2016, the county didn't want to do anything with this property. These developers came to the county, they tried to work with the county, and I wasn't on the board. Four of us up here were not on the board at that time. And the county did not want the project. I think the project got annexed into the city of Stockbridge, and city of Stockbridge has taken it, and for two years, they have been running with it. When I got elected in 2016, I sat down with a member of the city council, their staff, and our city, county manager, Sherri Matthews at that time, and said, I know this is a city of Stockbridge project, but I don't care whether it's in the city or the county, it's still in District Two. There are over 3,000 residents that sit around this project. All 3,000 are not in the city of Stockbridge, they are in the county. They sit in District Two, they sit in my district. I have tried to work with Stockbridge, I have contacted them to say, hey, let me in on the meeting so that I can discuss with my constituents what's happening with this project. This project has been nothing but a Facebook saga. Retail is coming, Cabela's is coming, Top Golf is coming, ain't nothing coming. So the developers have reached out to the county, reached out to me as the district commissioner and said, we need an anchor. Cabela's dropped out, Costco's dropped out, Top Golf dropped out, everybody's dropped out. They need an anchor, they need someone in this community, they need this county, they need this city to put up or shut up. They need an anchor on this property so that it can be developed, so that it does not grow up to become grass again. The church is next door, they're calling me. Walden subdivision is across the street, they're calling me. We have tried, I have asked. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the way this property is zoned. It is zoned PD. I looked at everything that could happen in a PD zoning. I talked to the persons over at Stockbridge about, you've got a PD zoning. If we were to put a conference center over there now, it is not allowed, based on the way the zoning is. The zoning would have to change. So even if we said we're going to invest in the roads, we're going to put a conference center there, the way Stockbridge has this zone, it's not allowed. Why don't we invest $50 million in a project that we can't control the zoning? It makes sense to take six acres out of 163, put $120 million in it, and jumpstart this Jodico. The citizens of this county is tired of Jodico being a coming development. Let's make it happen. Nothing happens, it's all in the hands of Stockbridge. If Stockbridge says, we want you to stay here, we don't want anything to happen, it sits. If Stockbridge says, we want to work with the county, we will let you de-annex with the intergovernmental agreement with the county. It works for us. So that's where we are. But the developers are saying, they need to know that if they de-annex this part, that we will be willing to put up something. There's transportation dollars. I have to have a say-so in this development to answer to those 3,000 citizens that sit around here. They're going to put hundreds, 400, over 400 units in this subdivision, but they walk in here talking about 390 on Flipping Road. It's a two-way lane as well. I'm the commissioner in District Two, I want to be a part of it. I have to answer to my constituents. And this gives us an opportunity to say, we want to be at the table. And so, yes, $5 million of transportation dollars of District Two, I would be willing to allocate to make sure that those roads are the proper roads that need to be in that subdivision. And my constituents know, if Dee says it, it will get done. So that's where we are tonight. This is how we got here. Nothing happens if Stock... Nothing happens if Stockbridge says no. It's in the hands of Stockbridge, and people putting, it's time out for this decade-old of the city against the county. They can't get along with each other, they wanna fight everybody else. It's time out for that. The reason why we're all raising our hands is because we're on the same page.
Wait, 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 order in the courtroom, order in the courtroom, Commissioner Clemmons has the floor.
We're on the same page because we communicate. We allow people to govern their areas. If this District of Stockbridge was divided up into districts, then I would only have one person that I had to deal with. My constituents voted for me. If they don't like how I'm governing in 2020, they'll vote me out.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I thought I saw Commissioner Wilson, I think Commissioner Barm, I've got comments as well. Commissioner Wilson?
So, Patrick, this going on, this SPOLOST Five, would this $5 million have to be on the project list?
It would be transportation funds, so...
It'd just say transportation funds?
Well, it could be handled the same way you handle a lot of your transportation funds. So it would be, you know, I haven't seen, I don't know the status of the current transportation list, but it would be handled just like any other SPOLOST funds.
All right, Commissioner Barm?
Yes, what happens if SPOLOST doesn't pass?
This, this, our agreement is contingent on having available funds. So if SPOLOST doesn't pass, and we don't have $5 million, then there would be no deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
One other thing I would make comment on, and Commissioner Clemmons, you wasn't here, but when this project was actually annexed into the city, I did reach out to the developer and try to work out something, but we didn't get anything worked out, but anyway.
All right, any other comments? Commissioner Thomas?
On this particular project, and I know a lot of this, again, started prior to me being seated here, but I do believe that Henry County need a catalyst. We need something to start working in this county, and we have waited and waited for a very long time, just to see something positive to move us to another innovative level beyond our warehouses, as already been stated, beyond where we are with housing. And as long as we have to depend upon housing to carry this county, your taxes will continue to go up. So we've gotta find a catalyst to start building on. It would be my preference for this board to work with Stockbridge to see how this can happen. I've not had the opportunity to talk to them about it, and I never put forth that opportunity to do so. There again, this was started before I took seat here, but that would be the preference to see how we can make this happen together. That would be the number-one preference. If that cannot happen, then I think the county is responsible to find that project and get it moving, to get it moving for all of us to start building around this particular area. That's one of the reasons Stockbridge almost became two cities, because people want to see their tax dollars working for them. And they wanna touch it, they wanna see it, they want to enjoy it, and be a part of that whole process. So I'm hoping from this discussion that we can find a medium to make that happen. I commend you for putting that $5 million to start this process, I can tell you that upfront. I commend her for doing that, because we have a lot of things in this county we have to do. And putting up $5 million of your SPOLOST dollars means something else to somebody that's gonna be very upset with you, but cannot get done right away. But you understand the fact that we need a catalyst to get things started. So I'm gonna support you in your efforts, but there again, I really do think we need to look at Stockbridge some way, somehow, let's start this conversation, and find a way to bridge this, to make this happen for everyone, so we won't be battling again, "Where's our tax dollars? What are we doing, and what's coming to the area?"
Go ahead, Commissioner Clemmons.
I think also, it's time out that the counties and the cities and the county, our staff knows how I feel about making attorneys rich. Nobody's getting rich by fighting, but the attorneys. Time out for the municipalities, "Well, I'm gonna get a lawyer, I'm gonna sue." Nobody's getting rich with taxpayers' dollars, but attorneys. It's time for us to sit down, work together, and make it happen for our community, and that's where I am with it.
All right, well, here I am. Yet again, this is the very reason why I wanted to table this, because we need to sit down and work together with the City of Stockbridge. A couple of things. One, has there literally been a conversation even amongst the board to even talk about how we feel? And I will tell you, as I travel across this whole county in districts one, two, three, four, and five, all citizens in Henry County are interested in this particular property. All citizens. "What's going on over there for Jodaco? When is this gonna happen? I'm ready for the upscale retail shopping, all of that." And the question, again, that I have is, have there been conversations with the City of Stockbridge? And I know that I have not been involved, and how do we bridge and address this so that it is not a divisive matter, again, in Henry County? The second thing is, where's the feasibility study about the business conference center? That is one thing that we've got to talk about, because you can build it, but you've got to figure out how you're gonna operate it, who's gonna operate it, and where the funding is gonna come from for that. So again, I began, this is my comment, I'm making a motion that we table this to at least have some decent conversations, so that we can, again, think about the best interest of all of our citizens, and not start another divisive matter. So I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So at this time, we'll now have a motion regarding the resolution that was just presented.
I move to adopt the resolution, there's this contingent plan based on Stockbridge, deciding what happens with this property that we will pass this resolution.
Okay, can you clarify that motion again?
I make a move to adopt this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt, and a second I see. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll now move into our public comment section of the meeting, and I'll look to the county clerk to identify, how many do we have? And each representative or speaker will have five minutes to speak.
Chair, we have eight speakers that have signed up tonight. Bill Tony, Arthur Christian, Lakeisha Gant, John Blunt, Anthony Ford, Carl Swinson, Larry Maury, and Elton Alexander.
Okay. During this public comment section, again, the public is welcome to voice their concerns and thoughts, and each one is to sign up with the county clerk prior to the meeting. Five minutes will be granted. We ask that you please address the board as you continue through this process, and we'll begin with our very first guest, Mr., if you'll state your name and address for the records.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to thank you for that. You really stood up, the chair stood up for the people, I feel like. The rest of y'all be ashamed of yourself. Last time we got involved in a project like this was called Cottonfields Golf Course. We spent over $22 million, and we're still losing money over there. This county, I don't feel like is capable of running a convention center or anything else, but that's, that is what it is. I'd like to ask the county to move forward on... I don't know where we've, where we've been, or what we're doing now to help these folks with the child trafficking, but you've got the Super Bowl that's here. From my sources, they say it's gonna be the worst it's ever been in Atlanta, and even in our county. Now, we need to get on board with the police department, working with the schools and everything else, and y'all, I feel like that y'all ought to put a lot more effort out. I don't know of much that's been done since we started bringing this up. I was in here about the Water Authority. I'm filling up my pool, I showed this before, and it came out green. I had a person to call me from the Water Authority after the meeting, and tried to convince me that that's normal. That's normal, everyday water. If that's normal, everyday water, we're in trouble. He said that was just the way it was. Tried to make me believe that, but, you know. I'll tell you what, tonight kind of proved what we've been talking about all along on the zonings and everything else. This is, y'all just, y'all have everything planned out. When the zoning comes up, you know exactly what you're gonna do, no matter, you saw all these people that got up tonight that didn't want no part of it, and it passed. Probably unanimous, I couldn't see everybody, but it did pass. Y'all really need to start looking at your constituents. Ms. Clemmons said that...
Please, Mr. President.
Ma'am. Would you give that to the chair, please, ma'am? I've underlined something I'd like for her to look at. Now, this is the, this one that I got out here, that says, "We request any concerns about an individual board member be addressed with that commissioner, and any other concerns about the county employee be addressed by the county manager." And I've got a problem, Ms. Clemmons, and according to this, I would be talking to her.
Well, I'm just, just a request.
Now, if you, if you wanna change this, this has been like this ever since I can remember. Now, for me and you to get up here and argue is senseless to me. Now, if I can't mention a commissioner's name, then why in the world would I even be standing here? So we've shot about all my time, but I think y'all are gonna drive this county slap into the ground. Yeah, and we've got, this is probably, now, Ms. Vivian, this is the first time I've seen her, but I'll be honest with you, it's the worst board I've ever seen, and y'all gonna get us into more trouble than we can get out of. It's a shame. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next individual, you will state your name and address for the records, please.
Yeah, Chair Wood, Commissioner's, I'm Anthony S. Ford. I'll give you my address, too. 708 Lily Glen Lane, City of Stockbridge, okay? And I'm the mayor of Stockbridge. It's unfortunate that myself and other individuals are gonna have, come to you and talk to you about this particular issue. I would tell you that I don't recall any type of conversations I've had with the commissioners in reference to what this conference center per se that you're, you wanna have, and in the city, inside the city of Stockbridge itself. I don't recall that at all. And I imagine that to have any type of discussion with this, I would like to sit down and talk with you, have the council involved, the staff, and even get some input for the citizens themselves. But actually, in all actuality, under the mixed-use development for Jodaco South, 160-plus acres of this land, conference center and a hotel was never even discussed. It all dealt with retail stores and shops, and some residential, residential homes there in this aspect. So for you to go about this is actually, I would say, slap in my face, to tell you the truth. You know, to say that you're gonna do this and you haven't had the conversation. Now, and to talk about de-annexing, we just went through one hellified year in reference to that. That de-annexing is a bad, bad connotation here, and so it's not, it's not good. I mean, we won that battle, the citizens spoke and said, "Hey, save the City of Stockbridge, we don't wanna split it. We're better together," which is absolutely right. We talk about one Henry, and we talk about communication, and we talk about trying to work together and make the county better. Going about this is the wrong way when you haven't had a conversation with us. I'm willing to talk to anybody at any time. I tell citizens all the time, when I give out my business cards, it's not that hard to find me. You go to the website, you got my name and number, I give out cards all the time, you know? I'll answer my phone, even my email. And I'm telling the councils the same way, as well as our staff. They're very responsive, responsible individuals, very competent individuals. But to go about this, commissioners, this way, you know, is really not a, not a good start. Now, I understand that two of you mentioned about the communications aspect, we need to really do this. The other four of you, you say, "Ah, you know, I'll take a look at that, Stockbridge's just pushing aside." Nah, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're not gonna de-annex this area. We're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that. It's not gonna happen. You pass this, but until we talk about this, you're not gonna get that, over my dead body, okay? You know? You're not gonna get it. So this is a moot point of going through this process, and I'm gonna tell you, these citizens and other council members are gonna tell you the exact same thing. They'll tell you in a different tone, I'm trying to be calm about this, trying not to maintain my composure, not lose my cool, right? Because de-annexing is a bad thing, a bad thing, especially after our last year. You know, this is not, it's not good. But have at it, you've still got to come to us, we control everything, it's inside the city, and we'll work with our developer and make sure he's straight on all this. And by the way, the property was annexed in December 2016. We come around to 2017, all right, and we're working through some issues and making some moves on all this, okay? Then, of course, 2018 brings up all those issues with the proposed city and splitting the city itself. Now, the thing about it is, common sense would tell you that when you're going through this particular battle, anybody or investors are looking to come into this mixed-use development, they're gonna be apprehensive, because they're not sure what's gonna happen, whether or not the property's gonna stay in Stockbridge, whether to go back to the county, whether to go to Eagles Landing. So now we know, it remains in Stockbridge, which is a great thing, okay? Now the thing is, is what do we need to do? Well, we're working on that process. This potentially is trying to slow things down. We'll make it, we'll make it through. We'll work with our developer, and we'll make it through, we'll make it through for the citizens of Stockbridge, as well as the citizens of the county, be very proud about what we're doing, and we'll make it work. We have a very bright future, and we'll make, definitely make it work. But I'll tell you what, no desire, no intention to de-annex anything, I say again, over my dead body, you're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do that, okay? Never. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. If you'll state your name and address for the records, please.
Good evening. Arthur Thomas Christian II, 509 Wintervee Way, Stockbridge, Georgia, in Monarch Village. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. There've been several things said here, and also on social media regarding the Jodaco project, and the options available to either, first of all, it's a privately-owned property. They control any and all or no development on that property. The City of Stockbridge cannot say, "These are the tenants that are gonna go there, this is when it's gonna happen." Not at all. Those are agreements between the property owner and the developer, the developer they hire for the property they own. Mr. Shin came to Stockbridge and asked for annexation. In 2016, Stockbridge obliged. Now we're at the point where there are some on the commission who are saying that there are only two, two options. Either Stockbridge agrees to the de-annexation of this property, or there would just continue to be pawn shops, check-casting stations, and basically nothing happening, as if the City of Stockbridge owns that Jodaco property. It's just totally false, totally erroneous, and really beneath our intelligence for you to even espouse that and expect us to say, "Ooh, you're right." But maybe you have some followers that will do that. You know, I read some, in a good book, it said, "He that would have friends must first show himself or herself friendly." I was glad to hear two of you on the board this evening recognize that the right thing to do is to sit down with the City of Stockbridge officials to figure out if there's some way that we can work together in this. That was excellent. What about the other four? What about the others? Listen, we all would like to work together, but you gotta show, you gotta show that you are a partner in this. You know, it was said that the developer came to the board with this idea, but what wasn't asked was, were there any questions, any conversations with any of the board members and the developer prior to it coming to this body? Why is it that so many on this board were silent when this, when the proponents of the City of Eagles Landing attempted to take half the city, over half the revenue, about a third of the people, of the citizens of Stockbridge? In a former role that I was chair of Citizens to Keep Stockbridge Together, a ballot committee designed specifically to keep the City of Stockbridge together, and here we have it, where there is an attempt for another de-annexation of Stockbridge property. where there is an attempt for another de-annexation of Stockbridge property. Now, thank God that in this situation, like, you know, there's a ram in the bush, so that nothing can be done in terms of de-annexation without the city officials of Stockbridge agreeing to this. And obviously, as has been said by the mayor, that's really not gonna happen. So, we are at a point now where you've gotta decide what you wanna do. Do you really wanna work together? Or are these just words? Do you really wanna work together, or do you just want control? What is it that you really want? Do you want the power? Are you trying to make money off of this on the side some kind of way? Is this for setting yourself up in the future? What is this really about? Because obviously, it is not about One Henry. Obviously, it is not about, you know, the one prayer walk. Obviously not. Because if it was, you would already have been at the table, it wouldn't be a conversation of, "I haven't heard from anybody recently, I haven't seen the feasibility study, what's the demand for this? What's the impact? What are the positive and negative externalities of this? Who's gonna pay for it? Who's gonna operate it?" Think about what you really want. Really do this for the citizens and for the community. The direction things are headed in is not a good one. Make an about-face.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Blunt, uh, Henry County. Uh, one of the things I've always taught is that there's a thin line between perception and deception, and it's always the truth. And one thing about the truth is, you can't deny the truth, you can only come against it. So, when we talk about the truth, Chair, let's talk about some truths. The first truth is that the city of Stockbridge has an open-door policy to anybody that wants to come and sit down and talk to us. That's the truth. So, if you don't do it, you can only deny it and come against it. Because I can look at all the logs of visitation, and I've yet to see one coun, uh, commissioner come to the city of Stockbridge. The truth is, some of you up there, Commissioner, uh, Chair, look dismayed by what's going on right here. That's the truth. Because some of you are misinformed, and there's no plan on this, it's just to, to put a perception out to the citizens that this is gonna happen. This conference center is not gonna cost $5,000, let's get that out the way. So, the truth is, is that the city of Stockbridge hasn't put one dime in moving all those trees over there on that private property. That's the truth. You can't deny that, you can only come against it and put a perception out there that we had something to do with it. The truth is that we sat down with the developers every chance we've got. When you sit there and talk about Cabela's and you talk about all of these places, that's the truth that's been told to us. So, you can't come against that, you're gonna deny it for your own personal, uh, your own personal, uh, endeavors that you're doing. That's the truth. So, when you sit here and belittle city of Stockbridge government to make yourself look good, you can only come against us, but you cannot deny the truth that we stood on in this city. You can only deny it for your own personal good. And when I sit here today and I see this aggression coming from the, uh, this commissioners, commission board, you're not listening to the citizens? We just saw that. You're not talking to the cities? We just saw that. We have two parks in our, in a, in a, in a county that are close to the city of Stockbridge. One is so dilapidated that it looked like Jurassic Park, that belongs to one of your commissioners, and the other one is a, I'm not gonna blame it on the incoming, uh, uh, on the commissioner that just got here, but we've been told no funds are coming to city of Stockbridge. That's the truth. Look at the evidence. The evidence supports the truth. So, when we talk about the city of Stockbridge, we're not the stepchild of the county, we're the up-growing big brother, because we're gonna show not only this county commission that you gotta come to us in order to do what you wanna do with our property. We're not gonna sit back and watch this go down. When you talk about these so-called leaders that's supposed to be representing the, the whole county and their areas, tell me what they're doing for the city of Stockbridge, the person that they represent. We're not here as a cash cow for anybody, and we won't be a cash cow for anybody. So, when this aggression comes out to the city, that, who, who, who's afraid of that? Because I believe in my, my colleagues, we're gonna stand as a city, and I saw during this last year, we got a community that's backing us. So, when I say to this, that all this aggression about why we waited, why we waited, those that never supported us that's sitting up there today, we waited because you saw what was going on in city of Stockbridge, and you stayed silent. We fought, I was out there every day. Many people tell you about the bail I run, every single day, and to sit here and have the gauze to tell us, this city, that we're sitting on something? Yeah, we're sitting on something, it's a gold mine, and we're gonna make it grow.
Thank you.
I guess I'm number six, but, but I'm showing up as number five. Anyway, I'm Carl from Stockbridge, the unincorporated part, and I wanted to talk about first, um, the roads off of, uh, are the road called New Hope, which I believe is in Gary, your district, and, um, it is, is a nightmare down there, and we're, we're not doing a good job on patching the roads up here, and eventually, we're gonna get to the point where there's gonna have to be money paid for vehicle repairs, because they're gonna be really doing some damage to the, to the vehicles. So, best do something about the roads as soon as you can, because it's getting worse. My brothers over here in Stockbridge, they, uh, they're talking about the truth. Let's, let's talk about the truth. The truth is, the truth is, that tonight, we watched you guys grow this organization. Each of you is gonna get to appoint a member to a new agency. Un, un, unbeknownst to us, this was just out of the blue. So, we're gonna have, uh, maybe some of them won't be paid, maybe all of them won't be paid, but I guarantee that all of them will be your pets that are on that board or that agency, okay? We have a development board, we have a redevelopment board now, and what you did is you, you gave yourself the power to call any area, any property, a blighted area, and come in and take it. Does this open the door for eminent domain? Probably does. Good job. Now, nobody's safe in their home, and the constitution does give us that, that, that protection to be secure in our house, in our property, in our person. But you don't really care about that oath you took, do you? Nah, let's, let's, let's get a bigger agency down here and schlep it off on them. Good job. That's the truth of the matter, and it makes me sick. And the truth of the matter is this high density on Flippin Road. When you look at the tax base that that's gonna draw, you're gonna find that each one of those is gonna draw the same thing as those wonderful little townhomes right there at Eagles Landing and Flippin', just to the, let's see, Flippin' and Eagles Landing, the southwest, southeast corner there. If you look at them, each one of those townhomes is assessed at $100. Gee, I don't know, too, too many homes you can buy and have a property tax of $100, but by golly, they got it. And by golly, this new development will get it, too. So, don't tell me it's gonna bring a tax base. It's not gonna bring anything. It's just gonna make somebody richer? I don't know. Finally, finally, the, uh, Super Bowl is coming to town, and the word around here is that there is going to be trafficking and, uh, sex for, for sale like it's never been before. So, you say you have, uh, the, the children in mind, you wanna protect the children? Well, here's what, what you can do. Get the neighborhood watch people involved, get their, uh, their, their feelers out, because houses are gonna be rented for the Super Bowl, just for a few days, maybe a little bit longer. And those hotels on 138 and McDonough, especially the ones on 138, they are a hotbed. Now, granted, they may be in the, the Clayton County, uh, jurisdiction, but you know and I know, that they are on the east side of 75, so there's Stockbridge's problem. And it is a big problem. Somehow, some way, you better work with, uh, the sheriff over there in Clayton County or the police chief, and you better get some protection out there and keep it there 24/7 while this Super Bowl is going on. Otherwise, you're gonna see kids hurt, you're gonna see adults hurt, trafficked, and abused. And it's all gonna be on you, because you didn't think it was serious enough to take any action yourselves. Take action, be responsible, and do the right thing. Get the police down to these, um, motels, get them involved in the neighborhood watch so that you know what's going on. This is gonna cost people dearly for the rest of their lives, and this has fallen on your shoulders. And what do you wanna do? You wanna grow the government? Give us a blighted area redevelopment zone? Let me tell you what's blighted. This place is blighted.
Thank you.
We had a great general one time, Larry Moore, from Henry County.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Larry Moore.
Thank you.
General Patton said one time, "If you fail to plan, you plan to fail." Mr. Wilson, I came to you about a year and a half ago and proposed that we take the blighted golf course at Cotton Fields, and we all know it's pretty blighted, and build the conference center there, 'cause we could use all the splash funds, tax districts, bonds, it'll prove for anything, 'cause that is a blighted area. Not only that, there's a perfect spot for amphitheater without any improvements whatsoever except the stage. God made that, and you've already got the parking on two sides of it. We're gonna build a courthouse out there anyway, and you could take and put some of that into retail. You already got two exits on 75 feeding it, and two on the east side going north and south. So, there's literally no infrastructure gotta be supplied for that, 'cause it's already got it. And you hadn't gotta borrow no money, or s, it's, you already own the land, it's the counties, and you can utilize what you've already got and make that that's around it more valuable to where you can make money off of that. You know, but that's just widdy. Second thing, five years ago, I started, and June and I talked about this plan and stuff, by 2025, and if you don't believe me, sit down with me and I'll show you the numbers, we're gonna build 10 more schools K through 12, because of the houses and the apartments that we built in this county. Mark it down, now write it down, date it, say it, I said it tonight, and if you wanna study it, I can, I can prove what I'm saying. 10 more schools. And we already got trailers all around, the ones we already got. We are, we are growing broke overnight and don't, and we can't comprehend it. I read today where the state of Georgia is fixing to approve a billion, $150,000 to build eight field houses for athletics, and we got young ones all over Georgia going to school in trailers. We got our priorities out of order. We spending money over yonder when we already got something to spend over here. We need to plan better. Fail to plan, you, you're gonna fail. Stockbridge, Mr. Holmes? I, I'm, I'm using, I didn't talk to him, I'm talking what the truth is. I came to him about two years ago, and I think that's a great project out here at Jodaco. But we need to be building it to where a, a things out there needs to be built that pay taxes, not cost taxes. That bring taxes, don't cost taxes. Your commissioner was alluding to that a while ago. Now, I believe in telling it just like it is. Give me that property on Jodaco Road, and I'll put some retail taxpayer properties on it. Taxpayer. I don't care where it's in the county, city, don't matter. But Stockbridge, a couple of you need to understand, today, this is the truth, this is the truth. Today, I called three times to Stockbridge, and I can name names if I have to, and they never called me back. And I had a company here with me today, rode around with me all day from Norway, wants to locate in Stockbridge, and nobody called me back. I called three times and talked to one person one time, and the secretary three times. But that ain't the only thing. I talked to another gentleman in the city, and I'll call his name, a year ago, and he's yet to call me back. And I mull over my phone book up to anybody, doesn't matter. I believe we quit doing things. I noticed our illustrious Mr. Gil Chamber guy left tonight after y'all voted to approve it, 'cause he knows what's going on. I promise you, he knows what's going on. He's planning ahead to do it, what he wants to do. It's time for you guys and that city of Stockbridge to work together, to work together. If you'll do that, you can do what's good for Henry County and not what's good for your selfish self. And Mr. Wilson, I told you a year ago, and you never called me back. Shame on you.
Okay, Mr. Moore. Please, address the board. Thank you.
All you wanna do is make me get out, I know what you want.
Hello, Board. Elton Alexander, 920 Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia, 302-53. Tonight was simply an awful start. Uh, it's not about Democrat or Republican, black or white, it's about righteousness. And what you did tonight was wrong. We can't say anything other than the fact that it was wrong. You understood and under, and talked about how we got here, yet you made no mention of the city of Eagles Landing. You made no mention of the fight and the battle that was taken to the city. As a matter of fact, many of you participated in it in an undercover fashion, and then turned around and looked at us and said, "Ooh, what's going on with Jodaco?", when you were back-dooring us, trying to see what was going on with the situation. It, the, the important fact being made here was, yeah, there were discussions that came to this board long before the developer approached you. It's been done that way. Those are the wrong ways that we used to do things in Henry County. I had a lot of hope for this board, that we were gonna do things differently tonight, and that we were gonna vote differently than we did before. I stood on a street corner and got, and helped to get many of you elected, as most of these folks out here did as well, to get a different day. But it's the same, it's a new, new council, new board, but it's the same script and the same results. I'm gonna relate to you some of the things, Stockbridge has been the cash cow, as was mentioned. Every time a project, the county falls short on money, what you do is that you raid the accounts of the city of Stockbridge. You've done it numerous times. Oh, Stockbridge don't have it together, that's been the common refrain, that we don't do what we need to be done, that we don't take care of our citizens, that you know better than us. Let me tell you here tonight, that everybody sitting behind me that sits in, that lives in the city of Stockbridge, they live in your district, and they live in your district, and they live in your district, and they pay taxes to your district, so you deserve to spend those tax funds and those splash dollars inside the city in intergovernmental agreements and in partnership and collaboration with the city of Stockbridge, not in opposition, not throwing up borders, not throwing up opposition every time a great project comes along. That's not the way that you do things. Right now, the county has been in process of, of transferring between seven and 10 million dollars away from splash accounts. You know, we talk about different projects. Flippin' Road is supposed to have sidewalks. Flippin' Road does not have sidewalks today because $2 million was transferred out of that account to build the Park in Fairview. I, the Park in Fairview is great quality development, but that's just robbing from, robbing from one account to give to the other account. Secondarily, the East Atlanta Road Extension, $4 million was transferred away from that account to, again, to the Fairview account. That was not, it was not on the books. Those monies were due to citizens, these citizens that paid in the splash, those monies were taken away from them. A million dollars plus was taken out of the Rock Quarry Road widening, right? A million dollars plus, multiple times, transferred to Campground Road Extension, transferred to other projects throughout the county. All of those monies were due to these citizens behind me. Seven to 10 million dollars. Our yearly budget is $10 million, yet $10 million that should've come, the direction of the city of Stockbridge are missing from accounts that should've been applied to us. It doesn't have to do with Democrat, Republican, black or white, any of that. It has to do with right or wrong, and 10, seven to 10 million dollars owed to these citizens behind me is missing, and they were transferred from one account to the next. That is... That is wrong every day of the week, every day. Why do we keep doing that? Why? The excuse is, Stockbridge doesn't have that act together. Stockbridge is not doing this, Stockbridge is not doing that. Well, let me tell you today, Stockbridge, we have plans, we have comprehensive plans that we pass for our citizens to move the city forward. You could've come to us, you could've talked to us, you could've tried to collaborate with us, but yet you didn't do that. I said this on my social media page, this is akin to going to somebody else's spouse, asking to agree to marry that person, well, before they get divorced. Who would do that? Would anybody in this room do that? I would hope that no one would do that, but that's what we did. We went behind the scenes and worked out another backroom deal. No matter what it is, board is composed of Democrats and Republicans, we're tired of backroom deals in Henry County, and that's how we got here tonight, is another backroom deal.
Thank you. Okay, so that was the last speaker then. Well, we thank you for your comments this evening. And at this time, we will now move to the approval of our minutes for the January 8th Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, were there any revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Session.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We're now moving to the commissioner comments, and I'd like to begin the commissioner comments this evening. And for those of you, I really would love for you all to hear this, and those who are watching the TV. You know, I thought about this meeting very much tonight, and I wrote some pre-prepared comments that I must share with you. On the day after Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration, I'm calling for unity throughout Henry County. And when I talk about unity, I'm speaking about togetherness with the counties, with Stockbridge, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Hampton, and all of the businesses, the faith-based community, and every other agency that has an impact on moving these county, this county, and the cities in a positive direction. We're the second fastest-growing county in the metro Atlanta area. There has been some progress in public safety, transportation improvements, and economic development. But here's the thing, there are a lot of people that don't want change, but change is going to continue to happen. So what I say, please stop trying to dream of a better yesterday. We've got to stop fighting each other. We've got to stop judging each other based on race, gender, or even political preferences. We better find a way that we can embrace the change. And we've got to embrace it together, let go of our egos, and they control. We must continue this progress together, ahead, and to continue the growth, together we can do even more sooner than later. So what I say to you is that, it's not important to me who gets the credit. It is not important to me who gets the credit. The reason that we're still not moving as progressively as we can, because we've got individuals, we've got certain organizations going down the G-dot, they're confused on what Henry County wants. A R C don't know what Henry County wants, because we've got a divided voice. So listen, I will tell you, over the last two years, I have listened to our citizens, I've listened to these board colleagues that we have here, I've engaged with every city. I expect us to build a stronger partnership. Now, we've been down at the G-dot trying to enhance and build relationships with them, building relationships with the A R C, trying to work with the state and federal agencies as well, but what do we say, because we've got a divisive voice? We need to have a united voice, so that no matter if you're in the city or in the county, we know where we need to go. And I agree, that if we fail to plan, we plan to fail. So what I encourage you all, I have a vision for Henry County and the cities, and I'm gonna present that on February the 5th. That meeting starts at 9 o'clock. And what I will tell you is that I am respecting the thoughts and the visions of this board. I'm also gonna be presenting something that minimizes the impact of district lines versus county lines versus border boundaries, because we've got to think functionally. We've gotta think as a region. And I will tell you that we better take our joint county and city transportation plan, the joint county and city's comprehensive land use plans, and we better even come up with a joint county and city economic development plan, because we need to even think about even the public safety plans that we've got right here. There is great talent on this board. I'm gonna stand for this board, I see great talent in every one of these individuals right here. This is one of the best opportunities for diversity. And diversity, I'm talking about beyond black and white and gender and politics, I'm talking about, we've got a progressive person, we've got a public safety person, we've got a public works person, we've got an entrepreneur, and then I just thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for helping us to even get forward in progress, for advocacy, and bringing us together through a board retreat. And what do I have? I am a public servant that has servant leadership skills. And I will tell you that I'm a collaborative leader. That's why over the last two years, it seems like every time, I've been trying to get us together for a vision, trying to get us together with one voice for transportation, so that I know how to go out and be an ambassador for the county and the cities. We have over 234,000 citizens depending on the leadership here. We've got businesses that are depending on us, we've got children that are depending for their future 10 to 20 years from now. And I said, together, Henry County will be better, and we will do this. So I just call for unity. Call for unity. What businesses are gonna locate here when we're attacking each other? There is no professional business that is going to come. There is no quality development that's gonna move us past the logistics industry. We can do this. So I just say, I call for unity. I'm looking forward to sharing a vision with you, and I'm looking forward to establishing stronger partnerships within and without of Henry County. Those are my comments from this evening. Are there any other comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
I just wanted to say to everyone, thank you for being here tonight, and to realize, when we are making our decisions, they are not based on personal preferences. We have to meet with our zoning department, our hearing department, our lawyers, to talk to us about codes, rules, and regulations, and determine how we can best serve this county. That's one thing. And the second thing I want you all to point out to you all, the resolution in reference to Stockbridge tonight, all it did was give you all the power. We gave everything back over to you, to say we can't do anything without you. Nothing, that's all it did. So we did not come and try and take anything, we did not say we're going to court to take anything. It was a proposal, and it says, you have the power. So you don't have to worry about us coming back to try to do anything like that. So if you just look at the resolution, what I voted for, well, what it says, we can't do anything without Stockbridge. And that's the way I think it should be. We can't move anywhere without Stockbridge. So I wanted to point that out. I'm thinking, am I the only one hearing that part of the resolution? That's what it states. So please remember that. You don't have an enemy up here. We still do need to talk with you, and I'm still willing to talk with anyone to make us go forward together. The second thing is to remember, as stated, we are one Henry County. And I look forward to meeting with different parts of Stockbridge, McDonough, all of them not in my area, but I still look forward to meeting with them, to come forth with a plan that Henry County can go forth on. And I was a part of your group to keep Stockbridge together, I'm not trying to turn my back now. And I can say that anywhere. But I am for progress. How do we move progress forward? How do we provoke each other to work together? And we will need to do that, find that way to make it happen. I supported a U R A tonight, because we need a vehicle to help us find funding right away to move some projects together. When we tell you that we are held up to 2030, 2040, 2020, you all don't wanna hear that, you want of us to find a way now to make some of these projects move. A U R A will help us do that. And we will be appointing people to that board, which gives the public more input into what we are doing. So when we appoint you to these boards, you then have a voice, and you hold us accountable for the choices and decisions you make when you are appointed to those boards. So please remember, we gave you more of a voice tonight by doing that. We didn't do anything to damage you, we helped you by making that happen. My door's always open, my number's always available, I wanna hear from you, and people did call me, and they told me what they wanted, in reference to different things tonight, I read each and every one of those emails and consider them. So just remember, you do have commissioners that are listening to you. It's not a blanket yes, a blanket no, it's not by party lines, it's based upon what we think is better for you. And sometimes, developers have the right to develop their properties, if we deny it, they take us to court anyway, and they will win in certain senses. So we're saving money to make sure we're not going beyond what we are allocated to do in making these decisions. So thank you again for being here, we are listening to you, what you say and what you email to us is important, I know I read every one of them, so thank you again.
All right, Commissioner Clements?
I would just like to reiterate what Commissioner Thomas is saying, facts don't lie, people lie. So if you go back and you read the resolution that was approved tonight, and as I said, the power is in the hands of the Stockbridge. We're not deannexing, I don't know why people got up here saying the county's deannexing. The county's not deannexing anything. We don't deannex from the city, that's very rare. We would never deannex from the city. But if Stockbridge has to deal with the developer, they have to deal with the developer, and I urge you to deal with the developer, because we will not do anything that Stockbridge does not approve. And don't allow your employees to run your city. Your employees sit up there, they know who they've met with, ask them. And I'll meet with each one of the council members separately, together, and let you know our county manager was there at the meeting. So the mayor wasn't in office at the time, so he doesn't know, but the people sitting next to you know. Facts don't lie, people do. Read the resolution, the power is in the hands of Stockbridge, not this county.
Any other comments from the commission? All right, well, at this time, we'll now move into the, any comments from the county manager?
I have any comments this evening, Chair.
Okay, is there anything that we can report regarding public safety and the sex trafficking weekend? I know there's been lots of going on around the sex trafficking around Super Bowl weekend, and I know, is there anything that we can state on that?
Yes, Chair, the, as always, our public safety team has been working for Super Bowl preparedness. We do have some understanding and agreements with other jurisdictions around here, we do take child trafficking as always a high priority, and definitely looking at ways to curb that every day. So I think that the men and women are definitely prepared, are training, and prepared to carry on whatever is necessary for this Super Bowl preparedness.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, regarding our upcoming meetings and events, the next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled February the 5th at 9 o'clock, which is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And on February 19th, there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:30 PM. Please do note that the Splash Committee is continuing to meet, and that all meetings will be held on Thursdays at 6:30 PM. The next one is January the 24th at Luetto Middle School, February the 7th at Heritage Senior Center off of Florence McGarrettie, February the 28th at Timber Ridge Elementary School, on March the 7th at Cotton Indian Elementary School, and then on March 21st at the Henry County Administration Building. So at this time, if there is no other business for the board, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Shut.
And a second? All in favor? Thank you, and thank you all for being here, and those who are watching.